Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Grodick.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Stephen Coyle.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Matt Mosley.
Here.
Aaron Barowski.
Here.
Will everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have minutes from our meeting of September 23rd.
Does Erin have opening?
Oh, I'm sorry, Erin has opening. It's not on here.
Good evening, Brooklyn. October, as we, most of us all know, is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Be it our mothers, our aunts, our cousins, sisters, friends, I don't think anyone in this room has not been touched by someone that has been affected by this dreaded disease. Those that we've lost, those that are still fighting, I'm asking these council chambers to take a moment of silence. Thank you.
Okay, we have minutes to approve from our meeting of September 23rd. Any corrections, comments? Okay, we need a motion to approve, please.
Motion.
Second.
To approve the minutes. Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we will have our public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say pertaining to a legislative item on our agenda, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less. Okay, we will now have reports of committees, commissions, and boards. I'll start with the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee did meet earlier this evening at 6:00 PM, and we addressed the following items on our agenda. Resolution 2024-13, we did recommend adoption. This is requesting the county fiscal officer to advance taxes from the proceeds of the 2024 tax levies pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 321.34. Resolution 2024-16, which is on third reading and adoption, the committee made two, I'm sorry, that was a committee, the whole. The Finance Committee did recommend deferring this, and this is authorizing the mayor to enter into a real property purchase agreement with Brooklyn Rabbit Run LLC for the sale and purchase of two acres of vacant land located at 8707 Memphis Avenue, part of permanent parcel number 432-21-074. And the real property consisting of approximately 1.1 acres of vacant land located on Memphis Avenue east of North Amber Road. Permanent parcel numbers 431-22-001, 002, 003, 004, 006, 007, 008, and 009, and declaring an emergency. The reason we're deferring this is because the developer, who is a party to this agreement, needed more time to review all the final documents. We have our budget work session for the 2025 budget scheduled for Monday, October 21st at 6:00 PM in the community room here at City Hall. This is a public meeting, all are invited. Our finance director sent us the agenda. We will be discussing the five-year capital improvement plan and the 2025 capital budget, updated financial forecasts, Capital Improvement Fund, Street Fund, Capital Reserve Fund, a general fund review, 2024 general fund projection, initial 2025 budget discussion, and the initial 2026 forecast. That was everything discussed at the Finance Committee. The Committee of the Whole meets at 6:15 prior to every council meeting. And in addition to the legislation that I mentioned at the Finance Committee, we also address the following. Ordinance 2024-16, which is up for third reading and adoption, enacting Chapter 157, Connecting and Belonging Commission of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Brooklyn. This was amended per what was discussed at our previous meeting on September 23rd, and because this is amended per council rules, this does go back on second reading. Ordinance 2024-17, which is on second reading, amending the Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Brooklyn to regulate certain medical marijuana and adult-use cannabis facilities in the city. And this was actually amended per discussion at the last meeting of September 23rd. So that's going to be reintroduced this evening, the substitute version, which Mr. Butler is putting up on board docs for the public. And then we will also be taking a vote this evening to refer this to our Planning Commission for their review and recommendations. This is something that's under our new zoning code. When we have a zoning code, we refer to the Planning Commission, they look at it, and then they send it back to us either as-is or potentially with some of their recommendations. Ordinance, or I'm sorry, Resolution 2024-16, which is the one I just read about entering into the development agreement with Brooklyn Rabbit Run LLC. What we did at the Committee of the Whole is we took a vote on striking a clause that's in the deed restrictions. The clause reads, "The foregoing restriction shall continue for a period of 20 years from the date of the recording of this deed, and thereafter shall be of no further force or effect." The deed restriction that I believe is most important to council is the restriction that these homes will not be able to be rental properties. We have said from the beginning that we want these owner-occupied, and I personally do not want to see this expiring after 20 years. Mr. Butler is going to look and see if there's any conflict with us removing this in the Ohio Revised Code, and he's going to report back to us. And, and again, we're also deferring this because the developer needed more time. Under New Business, Ordinance 2024-21, which is on first reading, initially there was a request to adopt by suspension of the rules. This is amending Section 539.16 of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Brooklyn to revise the regulations over use of park and athletic spaces in the city. There are some concerns that we have, and the mayor agrees that we're not going to adopt this yet. We're gonna take a closer look at this and potentially make some changes. Ordinance 2024-22, which is on first reading, amending Chapter 148 Domestic Abuse Commission of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Brooklyn to revise the name, duties, and composition of the commission. One of the things, basically the makeup of the committee is being reduced because in reality, we don't have participation from as many outside organizations as we did when this was first established about 20 years ago. I believe we're going to consider keeping in a representative from the Police Department who would act as a liaison. And that completes my report. And we'll move on to the Recreation Board. Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Brooklyn Recreation Youth Basketball, grades three through, three through six, fees residents, St. Thomas More, and Heritage Students, $60. Register is open through October 18th at www.brooklynrec.com. Volunteer coaches are needed. Let us know at registration if you are interested, interested. Practices and home games to be held at Brooklyn Middle School Fieldhouse beginning the week of November 4th, and games in December. Away games to be held at Middleburg Heights, Brook Park, North Olmsted, North Ridgeville, Columbia Station, Fairview Park, Westlake, and Strongsville. Halloween Public Skate will be held on Friday, October 18th, 8:00 PM to 9:15 PM. Tickets are not avail, are not available at the door and must be purchased online. Residents and non-residents cost $8 without skate rental, $10 with skate rental. Fall Learn to Skate, ages 3 to 5 and 6 to 15. Friday sessions will be held on 10/18, 10/25, 11/1, 11/8, 11/15, and 11/22. Saturday sessions will be on 10/19, 10/26, 11/2, 11/9, 11/23, and 12/7. Spire is a fun class with individual approach for skaters who have passed Basic Six. Skaters will learn the skills needed for local competitions, plus another fun group, plus another fun group skate skills. Skaters will have the option to compete in area competitions. Learn to Compete is open to all skaters from Snowplow III through Basic Six. Skaters will learn the skills needed for local competitions, plus other fun group skills. Skaters will have the option to compete in our competitions. For pricing and additional information, please contact the Rec Center. Brooklyn Senior Center events for October include, October 17, Chili Cookoff at New. This is a free event, but please call or register in person so we can have, have a headcount. October 21, Halloween Ghost Ceramic Craft, 9:30 AM, costs $10. October 22, Mystery Lunch Meet at the Senior Center at 11:30 AM. Registration begins October 1st, costs $3. October 23, Bingo 1:00 PM with Sprite Senior. October 30, Bingo 1:00 PM with Brooklyn Point. October 31, stopping for a sweet treat, starting at 9:00 AM. Trick or Treat will be held on October 24, 6:30 to 7:30 PM at Safety Town, Veterans Memorial Park. Registration is required for kids at www.brooklynrec.com. Recreation Board on October 21 in the Rec Center meeting room has been canceled, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next is the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission, Councilman Coyle.
Good evening. The Planning Commission met on Wednesday, October 2nd, to hear a request from Zeissler Morgan Properties for a final site plan approval for a Chipotle outlet building at 7320 Northcliffe Avenue in Ridge Park Square, permanent parcel 43315001. The Commission approved this request. Please be advised that a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting has been scheduled for Thursday, October 17th at 6:00 PM in the Brooklyn City Hall Community Room to hear the following: An appeal request from Gateway Park LLC of 11111 Memphis Avenue regarding vacant property registration and fees. And then a variance request from Lisa Jeros of 9645 Melody Lane to add in addition to an existing garage. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. School Board Liaison, Councilman Mosley.
Thank you. Last Thursday, the Brooklyn School District held a town hall meeting for everyone in the community to attend. Throughout this meeting, there were many things discussed regarding the improvements that are soon to happen with the school from the passage of our recent bond issue. Many of the things discussed have been talked about here at council. Something that I took away from the meeting was how important it was for our district to have the youth of our city enrolled in our schools. Brooklyn City schools have so much to offer, and I encourage those who live here and don't use our district to give our schools another look. Of course, I support every parent's choice to make the correct one for their, them and their family. As far as the school board meetings, they are currently having a meeting right now since yesterday was Columbus Day. If you're watching this after October 15th, the meeting has already happened, and I will report on that in two weeks. And that concludes my report.
We'll have reports of council, and this evening we begin. And this evening we begin with Kevin Tansky.
Good evening, I'm going to make it short. I would like to remind all residents that early voting is now open. You can early vote by absentee ballot for those who are voting by mail, or can vote in person at the Board of Elections. This year's election day is November 5th, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Grodick.
Thank you. And to add on about early voting, I would just like to let everyone know, I've mentioned this before, but early voting in person for those of us who live in Brooklyn is very easy. The Board of Elections is located on East 30th in Euclid. I voted on Friday. Because it was a day off for many school districts, it was rather crowded, which was exciting to see. This week, voting is 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. No weekend hours yet. Next week, it will go from 8:00 PM, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, so there's a small increase. October 26th and 27th are the first weekend hours, and the hours vary on Saturday and Sunday. And the same with the following weekend. I did notice that you can drop your ballot if you do mail by, vote by mail, you can drop your ballot off in person. They are asking if it is your own ballot, because it is a law in Ohio that you only turn in your own ballot or a ballot for someone who's living in your household. So there was someone there asking and verifying that. But it is an easy way to vote. Make sure you bring your proper ID if you're voting in person. And I encourage you to vote between now and November 5th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Coyle.
Good evening again, everyone. First, I want to say thank you to Chief Paul and the Fire Department for quickly extinguishing the fire across the street at the Old Pool Office over the weekend. Thankfully, no one was hurt. As already mentioned, early in-person and absentee voting have begun. This upcoming election has quite a few issues, and of course, the presidential race. Please do your research, exercise your right to vote, and make sure that your voice is heard. Tonight, Ordinance 2024-16, enacting Chapter 157, Connecting and Belonging Commission of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Brooklyn, has been placed back on second reading. I feel like this ordinance, much like similar legislation that was vetoed earlier this year, has gone back and forth, changing many times up here on the table, ultimately kicking the philosophical can down the road. While I appreciate the effort to deliver a piece of legislation that all of us can agree on, I believe the true intentions of what was introduced late last year had been lost until our Committee of the Whole meeting tonight. This past summer, some of our residents fell victim to a senseless, senseless crime spree fueled by hate and a lack of understanding. As these residents spent their time and money reinstalling and rehanging pride flags and other pride symbols while feeling unsafe and that their properties had been violated, I couldn't help but wonder what Ordinance 2024-16 could have done to make them feel safer, educate the community, and/or prevent this from happening in Brooklyn. While the amendments that Councilman Mosley made tonight during Committee of the Whole may seem minimal, they help to ensure that this commission will play an integral part in ensuring our community is not only engaged, but that everyone here can feel safe and welcome to be their true selves. I want to thank Councilman Mosley and the rest of council for making these changes, because without them, I would not have been in favor of passing this legislation. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Selhertz.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to four residents that came out on a weather-perfect Saturday morning on October 5th for the cleanup of the I-40 ramps at Tiedemann Ridge and State. Those four residents were accompanied by Mike Menett from Keep Ohio Beautiful, Joel Hunt, an administrator from ODOT with the Highway Beautification and Pollinator Habitat Program. He was from Columbus, and there was myself. Also, we had three individuals that worked 480 from Ridge to State on both sides. So thank you to everybody that tried to give a hand out and help us. Thanks really also should go out to the Service Department with Mr. Verba and his staff. They were out there Friday. The day before, we were there cleaning up stuff, cutting the grass, trying to make it look pretty. Next day, less than 24 hours later, we were cleaning up stuff again. So some people take pride in our community, and some don't. It's kind of sad to say. A few residents have talked about the latest invasive insect, the spider lanternfly, going through with the Laurel Garden Club. I was able to reach a lady by the name of Morning Robinson. She's the Agricultural Natural Resources educator for the OSU Extension in Cuyahoga County. You can report to, reports of spider lanternfly can be submitted to her via email and should include a date, photo, and street address or descriptive location of where this, the invasive species was found. Her email is robinson.2024@osu.edu. Additional information can be found visiting the Ohio Department of Agricultural SLF webpage or the Penn State Extension webpage for information about controlling management of invasive species, pesticides, trapping, other management, population management practices. In her email, she goes, "Control of this invasive pest's population has become a priority, and anything county residents can do to help is greatly appreciated." It's a species that is quite destructive to vegetations and even some types of trees. And last thing, on a happy note, Halloween contest is on for, again, for this year. Please submit a picture of your house and email it with the address and your name to Deadline to enter is October 30th. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As mentioned earlier, I'd like to remind everyone to register for our Rec Center Trick or Treat event at Memorial Park Safety Town. This is happening next Thursday, the 24th, starting at 6:30. You must pre-register for this event, don't just show up. Also, the deadline to request an absentee ballot is soon approaching. October 29th is the last day that you can request a ballot. And with recent changes to voting laws, you must have that ballot mailed and postmarked no later than the day before the election, or drop it off no later than the day of the election at the Board of Elections downtown. I would also like to thank everyone, including the Mayor, Chief Milky, and Mr. Bruzy with our Rec Department. The situation at Marquardt Park was spoke about last week by more than last week, or more than a couple of weeks ago, more than just by council, but residents, and it's been an ongoing issue. And I'm not saying everything is solved, but things are better, and I hope that they will continue to trend that way. Thank you all for responding to the concerns from us and the residents, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Barowski.
Thank you, Council President. I would personally like to acknowledge Kelly Crawl, Robin Lawrence, Joanne Morales, and Luth Scarbo. All of these ladies put in time and effort in bringing up good debates and ideas on the new purpose and productive future of the commission with the new ordinance that we introduced tonight. At the last meeting, which included Joanne, Kelly, and myself, which took place earlier this month, we had wonderful dialogue on finishing the ideas that evening so we could send them to the Law Director to introduce the new ordinance tonight. We're hopeful to see it pass before the end of the year, hopefully so that the commission can hit the ground running in 2025. As always, thank you, Mr. Butler and Mary Jo for the assistance with this. Ortiz Art Drafts and Designs. This past week, I took the time to take a visit up there and help to promote their business online. If anyone is looking for good products such as shirts, hats, engraved glass from a local city business, Hermes and his wife Jeanette would love to help you out with your needs. The holiday season is around the corner. Where those that are with see a hopeful and happy season ahead. Those that are without, especially poverty-stricken children, see a season not so happy. I will once again be teaming up with the Toys for Tots and the Marines Campaign, and in the coming weeks, a toy collection bin will be placed in the lobby outside of these chambers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I'm just going to expand a little bit without being redundant regarding the election. Due to House Bill 458, which was passed in 2023, there were quite a few changes in the requirements relating to ID and also the timing of certain things, which some of those have been addressed tonight. But they did experience, and they're continuing to experience it in this early voting also, a higher rate of rejection. And for the election that was held in 2023, they also had a higher rate of rejection, rejecting the provisional ballots. So just a quick recap, the voter ID did change. The requirement, this is for vote by mail, Ohio driver's license number, or an Ohio state ID card number, or the last four digits of your social security number. That bill eliminated the option to provide the following as a valid form of ID, and that was a current utility bill, bank statement, government check, paycheck, or other government document, or a conceal-and-carry permit. So those are no longer sufficient. The timing was already talked about, that now instead of, there was 10 days from the time you mailed your vote-by-mail ballot, as it had to be postmarked the Monday before the election, which is still the same, but they did give more time for it to arrive in the mail, and now they only give four days. Something they are doing, Councilwoman Grodick touched on this, if you are returning the ballot of a close family member, I understand that they have a form that they want you to complete now. So it's not that you can't return it, but there is a form that you have to complete. The voting ID requirements on Election Day also changed. It's the Ohio driver's license, which includes a temporary instruction permit, Ohio state ID, an interim identification form issued by the BMV, a US passport or passport card, US military card, Ohio National Guard ID, or US Department of Veterans Affairs that includes your voter's name and a photograph. There's also, your driver's license and state ID must not be expired. If you have a suspended driver's license that is not expired, you can still use that as ID for voting. Actually, if you have, if you've changed your address with the BMV, but you didn't get a replacement card, that your card still has your previous address, as long as you've reported that, you can still use that driver's license or state ID that has your former address on it. And then another component, in case people are not aware, is if you are over 17, you can get a free state ID card if you don't have one. I attended the Shunpike Shop at the Brooklyn Historical Society, and I'd like to thank Mrs. Barb Steppich and all her dedicated volunteers. I've mentioned this before, please consider joining this group. It's a very small but mighty group, and there's a lot of interesting things. There are speakers and different get-togethers, and it's really worthwhile, and you learn a lot about our history. Regarding Markwart, thank you, everyone who's been involved. Thank you, Chief, for the tow-away signs. And I know that we've been having a little more oversight and attention to the area from both the Police Department and the Rec Department. I'm just going to share something that happened last week. I know that it's going to take time for this to improve, and to be honest with you, it's probably going to take someone being towed before we actually get this resolved. But there was a FedEx truck, and they were blocking a resident's drive, which was not an issue. This is the resident who reported this to me. What happened was, they could not turn around because there was a parent of a high schooler who had parked there and left the car in the emergency. So anyone who knows anything about FedEx, they're on a very tight schedule, and they have to keep to that schedule because they have very high-performance standards for their employees. So people were asking, and no one was responding, to come and, you know, move their car, and it ended up, the parent was identified, and then there ended up being a screaming match between the parent and the FedEx driver. So I know that we're coming to the end of soccer, but we're still going to need, as long as we've got good weather, like some extra attention down there. I had the opportunity today to do a walkthrough to the new library. This is going to be great for our community, and I think residents are really going to be pleased. Clearly, it's a much larger facility than what we have right now. It's about 7,000 to 8,000 square feet larger. There's a beautiful space for adults with a fireplace. We have study rooms, meeting rooms, a cafe area. There's going to be a Pearson View testing facility, which means there's certain tests where it could be a CDL, GED, I think cosmetology. There's a whole variety of tests that now residents will be able to actually take them right here in the library. There's a teen area that's very roomy and nice. The spaces are really beautiful and functional. In the children's area, there's going to be something that's new for Cuyahoga County Public Libraries, and that's a big-body play area for children. And this recognizes the importance of not only developing the fine motor skills, but also the large motor skills. The theme for the children's area is taken from a book. It's called Just Ask, Be It's called Just Ask, Be Different, Be Brave, Be You. This was written by Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor and award-winning artist Rafael Lopez, and they created a kind and caring book about the differences that make each of us unique. Feeling different, and this is just a little synopsis of the theme. Feeling different, especially as a kid, can be tough, but in the same way that different types of plants and flowers make a garden more beautiful and enjoyable, different types of people make our world more vibrant and wonderful. In Just Ask, United States Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor celebrates the different abilities kids and people of all ages have. Using her own experience as a child who was diagnosed with diabetes, Justice Sotomayor writes about children with all sorts of challenges and looks at the special powers those kids have as well. As the kids work together to build a community garden, asking questions of each other along the way, this book encourages readers to do the same. When we come together, when, excuse me, when we come across someone who is different from us, but we're not sure why, all we have to do is just ask. And the grand opening for the library will be Saturday, November 16th, from 1 to 5. It will be a very fun day for our community, so please try and attend. That completes my report, and next we have the mayor's report.
Thank you, Council President. Pleased to notify councils tonight that the Bureau of Justice Assistance granted us a $14,675.65 ballistic vest grant under the 2024 Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership. We've already received those funds for those vests. The national test results for our police officers that we're looking to hire has been certified by civil service. The Police Department has already begun that vetting process. The Veterans Memorial Park upgrade had one of the two bid openings this past Friday. The second one will be, will take place on October 25th. The project is broken down into two projects, one for the sport court and the other one for the rest of the park. The Memphis Road Diet is nearly completed. We received the cost for the landscaping portion of the project, and I thought it was way too high, so we request, we've requested several more quotes from different landscape contractors to get this work completed. These quotes are due on Thursday of this week. The plan is to complete the medians on Memphis Avenue this fall, and then bid out as a separate project, the row improvements in front of the plaza, along with the sign and landscaping project on the corner of Memphis and Ridge Road, and that will go out to bid next spring. As Council President mentioned, the library is moving forward on schedule as well, and she already mentioned the grand opening in mid-November. The Southwood Waterline and Road Replacement Project got restarted on Monday. There was a pause in the construction for a couple of weeks, and that was a result of the division of water, having to perform some required testing. But as I just mentioned, they did get that construction underway yesterday. There's still additional landscaping that's being done on I-480, so you'll see some landscaping trucks out there as well. In regards to Markwart Park, since our last meeting, we've taken several steps to rectify those issues that were discussed. We removed the wayfinding signs. We were able to use a current ordinance that we've had on our books, as well as the Ohio Revised Code to deem the ends of Heather Lane, Brook High Drive, and Southwood Drive as tow-away zones. That signage has already been made in place there. We've also had recreation staff, as well as Brooklyn PD, visiting and monitoring the park on a much more regular basis. Additionally, we are partnering with the schools to move all of the younger soccer kids' activities to the property next to the football stadium. So only the JV and varsity soccer. The older kids will be scheduled regularly at Markwart Park starting next year. There's some work that has to be done on the field next to the stadium, and the school district has agreed to split the costs of doing that. So we'll be aerating and reseeding that field with the school district. That field work will be completed this fall, and then scheduling will move there starting in the spring for all the younger kids. Legislation on the agenda tonight, for council's consideration, would require a permit to use Markwart Park for organized activities, and this will further enable the city to reduce the traffic in that area by limiting those who can play. And as a result of our partnership with the schools, we'll be able to aerate and reseed Markwart Park, which we've not been able to do because it's used so heavily, and that will not be used for soccer at all until next fall. So again, the plan is to only use Markwart Park for JV and varsity soccer practices and games beginning fall of next year. Since most of the traffic up there, not all of it, but a good portion of the traffic up there is due to the kids' programming, as well as the out-of-city leagues that we're trying to curb, these actions should help eliminate, or should not eliminate, but reduce the amount of traffic and trash at Markwart Park. So as Mrs. Pucci mentioned, it's going to take some time, but we are taking very proactive steps to reduce the traffic up there and to hopefully solve that problem. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is notifications. The mayor just mentioned the ballistic vests grant that we received. We'll move on to legislation. And under Old Business, we have Ordinance 2024-16, which is up for third reading and adoption, enacting Chapter 157 Connecting and Belonging Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. And we do have some amendments this evening, so therefore, this is on second reading per our council rules. I don't know, Mr. Mosley, if you want to read them?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me be recognized. The changes are as follows. In 157.01, it says established and purpose, and now it will say established purpose and goal. Subsection B will say the goal of the Connecting and Belonging Commission is to create a thriving and welcoming community to everyone who is a stakeholder or visitor. Subsections B will change to C. Subsection C will change to subsection D, and then we will add the definition of belonging into subsection D. So it will read in totality as... As used in this chapter, stakeholders means that the residents of Brooklyn and those employed in the city. Connecting means the practice of joining stakeholders with each other, and belonging means the affinity for a place or situation. And engaging means the desire to be more involved in the community. There was also a change to 157.05 duties in Section A, and that will read as follows. Educating and sharing information with city officials and the public concerning the benefits of connecting Brooklyn stakeholders aimed to establish a sense of belonging to ensure that no one is excluded.
Thank you. Director Butler, we did amend this at the Committee of the Whole. Do you recommend that we take another vote, or was that sufficient?
No, I think that your, your vote committee, the whole, amounts to a recommendation. So I would, I mean, ultimately, you, that, this will be the version that's published if it goes forward past tonight. But you can move to substitute now to make that official.
Okay. Do you want to make that motion?
I would actually like to talk a little bit about this, too. So we had, we have been talking about this type of legislation for almost a year, almost a full calendar year. And some people might think that there's a lot of talk that goes on outside of the public view, and that's not always the case. I would like to see a motion to substitute the version recommended by Committee of the Whole, and if there is support to possibly adopt it tonight to get this committee to work. Stephen had mentioned, Councilman Coyle had mentioned, that there are things that happened throughout the year that he thinks that this could have prevented, and with this being in its final form, in my opinion, I would like to see the committee get to work. So my, my motion would be to substitute this version recommended by Committee of the Whole first. So I'll make that motion.
And then we need a second?
To accept the substitute version, Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
And then I would like to motion to suspend the rules requiring that that version be on second reading, and then to adopt by suspension of the rules.
Can you restate that again? So you want to suspend the rules?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second, or does anyone have any comments or questions?
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Okay. I guess I'll just, I'm just, I was thinking this was going to be on second reading, so I'm just trying to peruse these again real quickly. One of my concerns, which I, and these are my personal thoughts, I do believe that this does improve it to, it does definitely make this better, in my personal opinion. I know that we've worked really hard. Everybody had a lot of input, and there was initial legislation that ended up being vetoed, and then there wasn't enough to override the veto, so then there was another piece of legislation introduced. And I guess one of my concerns is, I'm not sure if it's too far away from the original intent. And I went back to, like even looking up the definition of inclusion, because that was like the most recent change. And while, you know, connecting is a good thing, I don't, I don't agree that it has the same meaning of inclusion. And that is really kind of a sticking point for me, because, you know, we got rid of a lot of other language that, you know, to try and get to a consensus, but I'm just stating my opinion, so. Anyone else? Okay. Can you call the roll, please, first to suspend the rules?
To suspend the rules? Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
No.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
And then we need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
To adopt? Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
I'm going to vote yes, because I think that having the word inclusion in it is going to result in another veto, and I would like to see something move forward. So I'll vote yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is Ordinance 2024-17, which is on second reading, amending the planning and zoning code of the codified ordinances of the City of Brooklyn to regulate certain medical marijuana and adult-use cannabis facilities in the city. We do have a substitute bill, so we need a motion to substitute this evening, and then this is back on second reading.
So moved.
To accept the substitute bill, a substitute legislation, Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
And then next, we need a motion to refer this current version to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
To refer to the Planning Commission, Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-13, which is up for third reading and adoption, requesting the county fiscal officer to advance taxes from the proceeds of the 2024 tax levies pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 321.34. And this just means we're asking for them to, the county, to send us our property taxes at the earliest possible time. We need a motion to adopt, please.
So moved. Second.
To adopt? Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-16, which is up for third reading and adoption, however, we're going to defer, authorizing the mayor to enter into a real property purchase agreement with Brooklyn Rabbit Run LLC for the sale and purchase of two acres of vacant land located at 8707 Memphis Avenue, part of permanent parcel number 432-21-074, and the real property consisting of approximately 1.1 acres of vacant land located on Memphis Avenue, east of North Amber Road, permanent parcel numbers 431-22-001, 002, 003, 004, 006, 007, 008, and 009, and declaring an emergency. And Mr. Butler, just a quick question. At the Committee of the Whole, we voted to strike that clause from Exhibit B on the deed restriction. Is that sufficient?
It's really Exhibit D?
B.
Of the, it's Exhibit B of, excuse me, D of the purchase agreement? And it's Exhibit B of the deed?
Okay.
That would convey the property? So that, ask if it's sufficient, do you mean, is the motion sufficient?
Yes.
Yes, that's, it's understood what you want.
Okay, thank you. And so we do need a motion to defer this legislation, please.
So moved.
Second.
To defer? Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Under New Business, Ordinance 2024-21, which is up for first reading this evening, amending Section 539.16 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn to revise the regulations over use of the park and athletic spaces in the city. Ordinance 2024-22, which is up for first reading, amending Chapter 148 Domestic Abuse Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn to revise the name, duties, and composition of the commission. At this time, we'll have the second public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and welfare of the City of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. I guess they left it up to me tonight. Markwart Park, I moved in about 1959 as a little kid, and I lived at the corner of Springwood and Bit Off. It's always pretty much, I don't know exactly when, it was a woods in the beginning, and it turned into a park. And all administrations, whatever, kept this thing growing and growing. When I was small, they were told that there was going to be a street connecting, going around from all the side streets. Now it's just a sidewalk. Again, you kept building it and building it, and now you had never to put any parking in. I don't know why you can't figure out something with parking. You gave us those beautiful mediums on Memphis that most people, I think if you voted at them or against it. I was coming here tonight, headed westbound to pull into the drive at the light. Couple of cars were behind me, lucky there wasn't a lot and crowded. They would have nowhere to go around me, and you have like two spots to turn left. But again, I don't have enough education. And hopefully, are we talking, thinking about putting in mediums anywhere else, Ridge, Bit Off, anywhere that we can have a discussion before you guys go spend thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars to mess up traffic? Oh, yeah, I was behind the car doing about 20 miles an hour down Memphis. That was entertaining, too. And last but not least, oh, yes, and regarding voting. If you're happy with the last three and a half years or so with all the increases of gas, food, and all that stuff, keep right on voting them in. If not, neither party has anybody we really want, but think how you're going to vote, especially when we have a certain ex-president going, I'm ashamed of the men that are going to vote for, for Trump. Gee, what a remarkable. And here I've been asking, I haven't gotten any response yet. The street lights, yes. You put one in on Outlook where I live, and it's beautiful with a different arm and a different bulb. I've asked several times now. You have something to finish up. Are you going to put the brighter bulbs there, or should I just shut up?
We'll answer after the session.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Under New Business, Ordinance 2024-21, which is up for first reading this evening, amending Section 539.16 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn to revise the regulations over use of the park and athletic spaces in the city. Ordinance 2024-22, which is up for first reading, amending Chapter 148 Domestic Abuse Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn to revise the name, duties, and composition of the commission. At this time, we'll have the second public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and welfare of the City of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. I guess they left it up to me tonight. Mark Ward Park, I moved in about 1959 as a little kid, and I lived at the corner of Springwood and Bit Off. It's always pretty much, I don't know exactly when, it was the woods in the beginning, and it turned into a park. And all administrations, whatever, kept this thing growing and growing. When I was small, they were told that there was going to be a street connecting, going around from all the side streets. Now it's just a sidewalk. Again, you kept building it and building it, and now you had never to put any parking in. I don't know why you can't figure out something with parking. You gave us those beautiful mediums on Memphis that most people, I think if you voted at them or against it. I was coming here tonight, heading westbound, and pulling into the drive at the light. Couple cars were behind me, lucky there wasn't a lot and crowded. They would have nowhere to go around me, and you have like two spots to turn left. But again, I don't have enough education. And hopefully, are we talking, thinking about putting in mediums anywhere else, Ridge, Bit Off, anywhere that we can have a discussion before you guys go spend thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars to mess up traffic? Oh yeah, I was behind the car doing about 20 miles an hour down Memphis. That was entertaining, too. And last but not least, oh yes, and regarding voting. If you're happy with the last three and a half years or so with all the increases of gas, food, and all that stuff, keep right on voting them in. If not, neither party has anybody we really want, but think how you're going to vote, especially when we have a certain ex-president going, "I'm ashamed of the men that are going to vote for, for Trump." Gee, what a remarkable. And here I've been asking, I haven't gotten any response yet. The streetlights, yes. You put one in on Outlook where I live, and it's beautiful with a different arm and a different bulb. I've asked several times now, you have some to finish up. Are you going to put the brighter bulbs there, or should I just shut up?
We'll answer after the session.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else have anything for the good and welfare of the City of Brooklyn? Okay. Does, do you want to answer anything?
We've discussed Mark Ward Park parking for years. The residents over there have, do not want it. There's really no place to put it. We're working diligently to correct the issue. The streetlights, the city is budgeting almost $60,000 to do additional street lighting next year. I can't speak to exactly what the details are, but there are additional lights going up.
I'll just add about Mark Ward, too. The city purchased that land from the school. It was originally owned by the school, and what you're referring to where the path is, that was the Richard Drive cut-through that was put in place there when those homes were built, and they never, you know, needed to extend Richard Drive. So that's what that is. And now it's a terrific walking trail that leads to Mark Ward. I agree with the mayor that there's no room to put parking, the idea when we purchased the property, because we did like a radius of so many feet away from Mark Ward, and there's such a high concentration and a large number of residents that would be able to walk. The idea was to make it a walk-in park. However, you know, we are playing soccer there, and I hope with our partnership with the school, taking a lot of those games out of there is going to help, but there is no room for parking.
And to be recognized, the vast majority of the programming over there is the kids. I mean, and Mr. Brusie can correct me if I'm wrong, we have the, there's, there's just a very limited number of varsity games that are, that take place over there, but the vast majority of the traffic over there, these through this summer, was the kids. That will all be moved to Hurricane Alley, starting in the spring. And then when we pass this legislation for the permitting process, it's going to take some time, but the adult leagues that are coming in there that really are making the mess, they will be no longer permitted to be there. There's nothing that can stop them right now, because, you know, it's just an open park. So again, we're working on it. It's been a problem for a long time. I understand that, but we are taking very serious steps to rectify the issue.
Okay. Does anyone on council have anything? Mr. Tansky?
Couple questions. One of them to Councilwoman Pucci. You mentioned the ballots. If anybody brings their family's ballots or friends' ballots, that they have to fill out a form. Do they also have to bring an ID, the person bringing them down?
So you can't return a friend's ballot? The rule, or the way the law has always, well, I can't say always, but for a very long time, always stated that you could return a vote-by-mail ballot for a close relative. What's changed is they're, they're sticking to that, and like Mrs. Grodick mentioned, they're asking you, if it's your ballot, you're returning, and if it's not, they're, through this form that they're asking you to complete, and I don't know if they're asking for ID or not. I don't know if anyone else does, but through this form, they're trying to ascertain, is this legitimate? Like, is this, you know, your mother-in-law's ballot? Is this, you know, your elderly uncle's ballot that you're returning? And that's because, otherwise, it's against the law to return someone else's ballot.
I would imagine that they have an ID to prove that that's your relative, I would imagine.
Mm-hmm.
Second thing I got is the, I called ODOT today on those on-ramps, because they paved the south side, but the north, the, the south side, but the north side's not paved, the on and the off. They told me 15 days they were going to be out there. Well, I called them today, and I told them 15 days is up, time's up. And they said, will you keep a count? I said, absolutely. So, she's going to have the manager call, because it's still on the list. I says, well, you're not going to be doing this in the snow, so I'm hoping, because now it's gotten worse coming off I-480 going west. It's getting like a railroad track. So she said that Shelley Construction was going to be the one that are going to be paving those on, on and off ramps, which I didn't understand why the south side got paved, but not the north side. So hopefully, we're going to see some movement in the next couple of weeks. They tried to blame it on the weather. Well, that didn't work with me, because prior to these last two days, it wasn't raining. We had nice weather for a long time. Now it's weather. Well, the weather stops Wednesday, and we're going to have another six, seven-day stretch. So we'll see what happens. The second thing, I know nobody wants to hear about these, the medium, and I know Mr. Ardino brought it up. Mayor, cars have gone through that like a racetrack right up the middle. Now, what's going to stop them from going up like a racetrack when you put plants in there? I've seen in other areas, because I drive the whole city, they do have mediums, they do have areas to slow traffic down, and they put a, I don't know if you want to call it a sign or a pole, with some kind of reflector in front of it. So I don't know whether they're going over these medium because they want to, they want to tear it up, or they don't see it, or they might be on something. I don't know. But is there a way we can maybe erect like a reflector in front of it? Lot of them have that, and I believe even Parma Heights has got. But something to show that they need to move over or stay away from going through there, because the curbs around those mediums makes it real easy to go in it. It's not even a curb. I think it's a, a roll-up curb, if I, so by them hitting nothing and destroying their rim or tire, and then go right into it, and just keep going all the way down as they did, I don't know how you're going to stop it at a later time. And I'm not trying to be difficult about it, but I see it, I see us planting some nice stuff in there, and it's not going to, it's not going to last. It's not going to last. So I don't know if we have to tear it up, raise the curbs, maybe, maybe we can put something in front of it, a reflector, or something to show them that there is a medium here.